I hope everybody is having a healthy enough season and finding some joy in this season regardless of the challenges with COVID and unemployment and racial pandemic. So my blessings to all of you in this season. So we are just going to start right in with regular business. And that is you, Mr. Francis.
Very good, good, good evening, good to see everybody. We had our last meeting last Tuesday, December 1st. It was probably the longest meeting I've had from six to about 10:00, 10:30, something like that. And basically to discuss the budget. But let me begin by saying that the board continues to be preoccupied with the COVID-19 and its impact on our libraries, the operations, the staff, et cetera. The directors have been meeting every week as I've been informing you. Every Thursday morning, 9:30, they meet informally to exchange views and our directors and active member. That is very delightful to see all these directors exchange views and experiences and advice, et cetera. They work really as a team. It's very, very nice to see. At our last meeting, we really dealt with money, a lot, a lot of money. I think that's why the meeting took so long. First, we approved a capital budget of $400,000 for VDI improvements and upgrades. And I think our director would be very happy with that because the VDI has been an issue that created a lot of problems for our libraries. And so I use the information I got from him to lend my support for this budget. Now, under these old virtual machines will be upgraded to Windows 10. Currently, all virtual machines are running at Windows 7. And an operating system is no longer supported by Microsoft. A newer and more robust VDI infrastructure will enable WIS IT to install and run the latest version of Horizon software, maximizing the infrastructures, data speed, and security needed to support our libraries. And also, new local access devices will be acquired to provide robust hardware performance for VDI. I think these are things that make a lot more sense to our director. But anyway, $400,000 has been approved for that. Secondly, we approved a budget of $276,000 for fiscal '21, '22 for our central library aid budget in Mount Vernon, $276,000. Elements of this budget were discussed at length by the directors. And so when it was brought to the board, the discussion continued. Mainly, Mount Vernon was not very happy with perhaps the level of its involvement in the discussions. So when it came to voting, they voted against it. But in any case, the budget was approved, $276,000. Now, after a long and long and long discussions in the board, we finally approved a budget for WLS for fiscal year 2021 for $6.7 million. No, no particular increase, no. And this includes revenues from all sources. The budget was reviewed at length by our working group. So by the time they came to the board, it was pretty much discussed exhaustively. And I participated in some of the discussions at the working group. There are a number of uncertainties facing our budget and the operations of WLS for the next foreseeable future. Some of these challenges include the uncertainty of the financial support that we expect to get from the state. It's not certain right as of now, how much there's going to be a cut. I mean, that's, we can take this for granted, but we don't know by how much. It's 10%, 20%, 30% or whatever. So for the purpose of our budget, WLS took the figure of 20%. That there was going to be a possible cut of 20%. If it's less than that, fine. If it's more than that, then we'll have to make some adjustments. So there is that uncertainty. And that is not only facing WLS, but all the libraries and probably other institutions as well. That is one. Secondly, the audit reports are still being discussed at the working group. The recommendations have not been finalized. And therefore, nothing has been submitted to the board yet for discussion. So we do not know what forms these recommendations will take and what financial implications they will have. So that is one element of uncertainty in our budget. This mean purchase of more equipment, of hiring of more staff, or whatever. We'll have to see until the audit reports are finalized, discussed, and the recommendations accepted or not accepted or modified. There are a number of issues that just bring to your attention for information mainly. Now, as regards the hardware and software, WLS has been working closely with Microsoft to continue the migration to Windows 10 and Office 365. The initial use of Office 365, we at all, has proved to be a very beneficial tool in supporting remote working of this system during the COVID period. I guess our director will have a more direct experience of that. And as regards the wireless network, we are informed that the current equipment that are being used will have reached their lifecycle by August next year. And so WLS is now busy replacing all the existing wireless networks and supporting internet connections. The new equipment should result in more secure and robust wireless services and so give all our users a better performance, particularly as the Wi-Fi at the libraries. Another thing of interest is that WLS will continue to focus on professional training and development of its staff, particularly with regards to the VDI infrastructure networking. And that has been supported by the board. Now, one interesting development in the board is that starting January, the board will sort of transform itself in a sense into a kind of a thinking group. We would like to engage in a series of strategic thinking and planning for the future of WLS as we go forward. Taking into account what the auditor's report is going to say and his recommendations, we are going to take into account the impacts of COVID-19 on the operations of our libraries and the mandate of the WLS as a whole. We are going to be taking into account any developments in technology and experiences of the other libraries as regards the operations and the role of the libraries in our communities. So it's going to be a kind of free-wheeling discussion as to what our institution is all about, what kind of future it should shape for itself, taking into account all the changing environments and so on. It's going to be a fairly interesting series of discussions. And I'll keep you informed about that. Lastly, I will be circulating the report of the executive director for November. I don't want to bore you with elements of it. It is quite a comprehensive report. It will say much more than I'm able to say. And I'll circulate that immediately this evening or tomorrow. We had our 61st WLS, that is, 61st annual meeting on November 19th. You were all invited to that if you were able to attend. It was a brief meeting. The president of the board addressed the meeting and so did Terry. I think that that's about all that I have to report at this time. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Francis? All righty. I actually have a bit of a report today. I shared this with a couple of you, particularly the exec board, Dan, Whitney, and Chuck as a past president. One of the challenges I have noticed over the last couple of years and which has become increasingly a challenge is how we do business as a board through emails and particularly how we try to set up meetings through emails, how we don't have a central place to deposit all of our records, our policies. They are on the website. But as we become more professional, I'm just a little discouraged about our lack of professionalism when it comes to some of our meetings and just being able to, you usually have to look back four or five emails to figure out what is this email about and where we meet. So I've tried, in my efforts to kind of think through some solutions to that, I have come across many nonprofits that actually have board portal software. And so I want to talk to you for a few minutes about a recommendation that I am going to put forth. And that is that we do purchase board software, board portal software. Just for a little reference, I'm on another, my denomination, I'm on a board and we use board software. The Board of Education, of course, uses Board Docs, which is a platform that is particularly for Board of Educations and many organizations. And I also, actually, I'm sorry, I also talked to Tom about this and I sent him some of the proposals I got. Tom, by the way, did you hear back from anybody? Did you get a chance to ask your colleagues if?
I did, Whitney. After we-
I'm Deidra.
I'm sorry, Deidra. After we had our conversation, I sent out an email to my colleagues and did not get a response yet. So I'm just wondering if there in fact is not a library that participates. What I think I might do is, if I still have not heard from anybody at our next Thursday county director's meeting, I'll ask the question, you know, live as opposed to via email. And maybe I'll get a different response.
So the board software portal platform is very large. There's kind of a lot of, well, it's larger than I thought. There's about seven companies that really do this. I looked at three. I kind of did research and I came up with the top three. One of them I'm familiar with. The three platforms are called OnBoard, Board Effect, and Board Bookit. And after this presentation tonight, I will send you more information about each of them. But my recommendation at the end of the night is going to be, we need to pick one. And I obviously have one I'd like to pick. All of these, so you know, I'm going to show you some screenshots of them. But before I do, all of the board portal platforms provide basically a central platform where you keep all your board documents, where you set up your meetings, where all of your discussions about your board are. Everything I'm going to, all three of these platforms, you can use them on multiple platforms. So you could use it on your phone, on, they're all web-based. In since that you go on the web, they all can be used on iOS or Androids. In addition, they all come with a training component. And they all come, these three that I'm going to show you all come with an assigned customer service person. They all come with all unlimited space. The big difference is going to be the fee structure. So the fee structure is going to be per user versus a large thing. And this won't take long.
Hey, Deidra.
Yeah?
I spoke to Oscar Davis, who is a board trustee in Mount Vernon. And they do use a board platform. They use Board Docs.
Board Docs.
No, I'm surprised they use that because my understanding is that's only for Board of Eds.
No, I was at another agency and even a nonprofit was using Board Docs.
I don't like Board Docs. I think it's too clunky, but it's, you know, it's out there. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't look into it, but I certainly can. But that's interesting.
No, but I was just, I was just sharing that.
No, no, good, good, good. No, I'm happy you did. I'm sorry.
You know, I spoke with Oscar too. But my impression was that it wasn't, he told me he did not characterize it as board portal software. And, you know, I'm just not familiar with it. You know, Deidra, the one thing I would, if you have a recommendation, I would love if we could get a salesperson to do a Zoom demo. That would be interesting.
They did it. We can do that. They did it for me. I don't, I don't actually think, I think I'm going to send you enough data that you'll see the Zoom. They all sent me kind of videos of what they do that I can send you and you can look at your own time.
Yeah, he said to me, he said to me, Board Docs, again, it's a matter of us really getting the right language of what it is. So I asked him, you know, what board platform he uses. He's like, we don't use a board flat platform, we use Board Docs. So I'm curious to see what they use Board Docs in a capacity. He told me to give him a call tomorrow. I'll call him just to pick his brain, just to see what they use Board Docs for as far as it relates to the board. And then, you know, and just to kind of have, get an idea of what, what systems are being used and for what purpose, you know?
So I have shared with you, kind of, I'm going to start with OnBoard. OnBoard is, actually, I have an even better screen I can share with you. But basically, we're talking about board portal. Let me share a different screen with you because I think that will make it even easier. These are OnBoards. What do you guys see? Do you see OnBoard?
You can see it.
You see it? So this is what, and this is what all board soft, this is what all the portals will look like. There's going to be different variations, but you're going to have a homepage. You're going to have meeting, you're going to have like where you have meetings set up. Somebody would go into this, you'd set up meetings. We have an administrator, that's something we'll have to talk about, who would be setting these meetings up. On the left side, you see calendar, actions, notification. The very nice thing about these is kind of when you get to a meeting, so we have our board meeting, there's something called a board book and that would be actually embedded in this. So maybe it would be under resources. Let's see where the board book would be. So if you look like on the 17th of December, the sample board meeting, add to calendar, you go into this portal and you'll see all this information. And so if you're on the policy committee, you'll see meetings for the policy committee. I'm not on policy, I won't see meetings for that. I just see meetings for the board meeting. I would see meetings for budget. But I'd see all those meetings and where there's more information. So here's your sample board meeting. You kind of drill down. Your board book is that big, thick thing that Jean and Jessica and Tom prepare for us every, every month, which isn't, we don't have it as much. But that would all go in your open board book and it would now be online. Through this same portal, you'd RSVP to the meeting. You could go through Zoom to the meeting. We could do attendance and all those things. But here's the thing I really like is that you then have also, I'm looking at the central location for all historically current material, which I think is really necessary. If somebody asks me where the policy documents are or iterations of them, I have no idea. There is the latest one is on our website. But I have no idea if somebody were to ask me for the 2018 budget, I would call Tom, he would tell me. But I couldn't pull it up in a conversation. I'd have to go through my email. And I just think for us, it's not a good look. I think we should have kind of a central, a central database almost, or a central place. So the thing about-
I like this.
Who said, of course, because we are kind of, you know, as far as I can tell, we are right now not kind of in the best, we're not very efficient in the way that we're operating. I don't feel we are as board president.
So I was just told that Board Docs was used only for agenda and minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, right. So that, that's, that's not, that's kind of not what I'm talking about. Can I ask you what's on the screen?
This is good.
What was on the screen? So in, in, in the one I just showed you on Board, what I just showed you was the core, right? So then you can like start to do add-on stuff and it gets more expensive. And add-on stuff is voting capabilities, survey capabilities, which I'm not sure we need, we can talk about that. That's OnBoard. OnBoard has a relationship with something, somebody called, or an organization called TechSoup, which our library is already involved with. Is TechSoup just libraries? Tom? You're muted.
Sorry. TechSoup is not just libraries. It also includes education and nonprofits. And the products, the availability and the deep discount pricing oftentimes relates to the particular vendor and how they choose to price. They may provide a better price for schools, but a higher price for software for libraries or nonprofits or vice versa. But it's fairly extensively used by those sorts of organizations.
So OnBoard has a relationship with TechSoup. And so when I talked to the sales guy, he said, because we have the relation with TechSoup and if your library is a member, you get a discount. So let me just tell you about OnBoard. What I really liked about OnBoard is when I got on the phone with the salesperson, he knew as much about the library as I did. He had done so much research on the library, so much so that he told us our minutes are not, he told us, you know, your minutes, he had looked at our meetings, he knew who Cory was. I mean, he was like so well-bursted on us. So I really liked him and I also like that he has a relationship with, or that that company has a relationship with TechSoup. They are the kind of place that does the pricing per user. And so all in, and I'm going to send you more material, just kind of so you can conceptually think about this, they're $100 per user. And I said we'd have probably 10 users, that would be all of us, Tom, Jessica, and Jean. So all in, they're $1,000 plus for the core, for kind of just the basic, it would be the implementation fee of another $1,000. So on in, it's going to be about $2,000. That is the least expensive, only because of their relationship with TechSoup and also because we wouldn't be getting kind of the Mercedes of it. The other organization is Board Effect. And Chuck, this is what I sent you information about. They do the same thing. You're going to have the same portal, you know, tools to streamline the process of creating and managing board books, board meetings. However, they don't break it out into kind of a core and then add-ons. They put it all together, so they are going to be more expensive. With their one package, you'll get the opportunity to do surveys and polls and task management, which you don't have with OnBoard. And they're going to be about $4,000. It's going to look the same though. It's you have a certain meeting place, you have a certain portal, you go there, all your documents are there. They are a big company. They are not rated as well, but they are a big company and I use them for another organization. And for them, you can have up to 20 users. They're $4,000 though, they're, they're more expensive. But they're all in, soup to nuts, $4,000. OnBoard, the first one I showed you, you're not getting as much. They're less expensive, but I think we're getting everything we need. The last company was Board Bookit. They were much more expensive, $4,500. And they do the same thing. They're just a much more expensive because they're newer in the space and they're trying to make a name for themselves. And so instead of going less expensive, they kind of give you more tools. What do you call it, bells and whistles? So I can send you, I can send you, each of these organizations sent me either like a video about them. Our, like OnBoard, he knew exactly what I was doing. I'm surprised he's not at this meeting because the guy was like, I'm going to come to your meeting. He actually sent me kind of those screenshots I showed you. I will send you all that. We don't have to make a decision tonight, but at the next meeting, I would like to make a decision. I am recommending that we do use a board portal. I think it's necessary. I think we can afford it and I think it would make us much more efficient. So questions, concerns?
I have a question. So your recommendation is OnBoard then, is that right?
It is, it is. But I'm going to send you everything and you guys can look at it and you might come back with a different thought and I'd be willing to hear that. Three, you know, more heads are better than one. My only recommendation is that we do this in January. That is my big recommendation. And OnBoard would be what I suggest. In terms of references, Chuck had asked me, they all said to me, let me get back to you. And references, I have to call our clients and let them know and then you can reach out to them.
I have a question, just what, I mean, we have Google platform and it has all of those tools. It has a place to store documents, it has a calendar function. It has, you know, you can meet right even within that platform. And there's ways to collaborate. I'm just curious, like, you know, first of all, what we're paying for that service? And what is, what is, and I ask this as someone who has run several nonprofit organizations, managed boards, and tried to port not just information and data, but also people's habits over. And I kind of brought this up in the email thread, just wanting, you know, a tool is only useful if people are using it. So I'm just curious how, first of all, it's better than, than the Google platform if it was used more robustly? And second of all, how people feel about changing habits? And also, you know, I download everything, I try everything. I'm not, I'm not, not open to using new technology and getting used to a new system. But I've also been at the helm of trying to get people to use a system that people don't want to use or there's resistance to it. And then you're stuck with the old system because there's still information and people are still kind of in that, in that space. And then the new one where like things are moving rapidly. I'm just, just kind of throwing that out there for, for discussion more than anything else. I was just like, you know.
What the, I just don't see our current system.
Yeah, what, we have a G Suite, we have a current system?
We have, yeah, I mean, that's, all of our emails are through Google. So if you click on the little, the little grid at the top right, right next to the logo, the Westchester Library System logo, there's the Google Drive, which is where you keep all of your, your documents, where you can upload and store bylaws. It can be shared by the whole group. There's a calendar that everyone can see and share. There's documents that people can collaborate on. So if, you know, the policy committee is working together on a document, you can, you can be writing it together. You can see in real time that I'm editing it. I'm just curious, why not use this thing we already have more robustly? Or if people hate G Suite or, you know, that's funny.
I actually like the G Suite. I think the difference, because my organization has done some of the same things. And what we've started implicating, putting in place is implication is the SAS software, some of what you're saying, which gives you institutional knowledge, right? So the difference between G Suite and what Deidra is saying is, if Cory gets hit by a bus, you need my password. You got to figure out how to get in to get Cory's information. if Cory gets hit by a bus, you need my password. You gotta figure out how to get in to get to Cory's information and da-da-da, like, that becomes cumbersome. But if the, you know, platform that, you know, um, the board platform has all the documents uh, uploaded, then it doesn't matter.
That's true for Google Docs too. You can absolutely have a shared document drive that everybody sees everything. So the same exact function.
Well, I guess it's some, somebody would have to, I guess, the way maybe that I'm thinking about it is if we're gonna, I don't, I'm not familiar with all the Google tools, but somebody actually would have to like set it up and get, it sounds like maybe part of what we're buying here is something that's set up for boards to.
Easier, like a plugin.
Yeah. The reality is, is is, the reality is the additional steps with Google. And I think this is platform eliminating it's all the additional steps. For example, calendar sharing. If I share my calendar, you're literally going to see my entire calendar versus seeing just word-related calendar material. And and same thing for for sharing. You you can create a folder that is shareable. But again, you have, we have to remember it's always those additional steps, right? You gotta, you gotta upload the document to your drive, then share it, put that document into that folder. Then make sure that it's shareable. You know what I'm saying? There are so many different steps and I think in in yeah, not as lazy terms, simplifying, you're eliminating those those steps to this cloud-based portal. And that's, that's pretty much what it is.
And I would say the same thing. I would say that carries it to another point is we don't use the G Suite now. And so.
Even if we did, even if we did, we would need, like, what if you created a doc, it would be up to you to give us permission, right, through that document.
Well, there's a drive, the same thing, like you would create a drive and the drive you allow, you set the permissions once. And then anytime I upload anything to that folder, I mean, we would still have to upload things. They don't magically appear into.
No, we would have to.
So that's not an extra step. That's the same step. And then you have a drive. The drive is shared through all the board members and someone has to administer this thing anyway. I'm just, you know, again, like I just, I I I I know it's messy before it's tidy. So I know that there's going to be a, you know, there's like a a porting process. Um, and I I I don't disagree that this, these things can be streamlined. I'm just throwing it out there. My calendar for the WLS URL domain is just library stuff. I have my personal Gmail. I don't use it for libraries. So if I share my calendar, all it is is board-related anyway. So I'm just like, you know, are we then abandoning the G Suite? Is it now two things that we still have to check? Is it like we're just trying to just like eliminate?
I don't use the G Suite for the library at all ever.
Just the email.
Just the email.
Just the email.
Just the email. I don't know, maybe the rest of you use the G Suite for the library. I don't use it at all. I find it too.
Would.
And like Daniel said, I find it very cumbersome.
I think I would if if that was kind of our, our like functional culture, but um, you know, I don't know what other people think. And I, again, I'm 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 open. I'm just.
Use both. I mean, G Suite and I use cloud-based software. And, you know, both of them change, serve their own functions. So from the G Suite side, if I'm working on an Excel doc or a Word document and I need interaction between one coworker and the other coworker, then yes, we have to share that. But as an institution, you know, as my business, I have to have a cloud base that I'm not worried if my facility guy leaves tomorrow. He wants to corrupt flaw files or things like that. I like having a cloud-based software where once it's loaded in, I actually can take over the reins of that information if I have to. So that, you know, to me, that's a big difference between G Suite, which you definitely have more individual control than a cloud base, which you are in the cloud and everyone can participate. It's just my opinion.
I mean, and one of my things is I'm president and I'm not going to be present next year. I've I've been here for six years and I have a lot of institutional knowledge. And I'd like to be able to um, find a way that I can make sure that y'all have all that institutional knowledge. And I just don't see that through Google, through through the G Suite. Um, and I also feel like we've become very cumbersome um, in 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 organizing ourselves. Um, you know, trying to kind of organize ourselves, trying to organize meetings has become a real issue. Um, when it, when you can't have a meeting for two weeks because we can't get, that's an issue. So whether we, whether we sob that through the G Suite or whether we set, that's something we have to kind of.
Notifications on your phone. Is it like a, like it's all handheld, so it's popping up and being like, I mean, I, you know, we use WhatsApp for for the PTA and it's just like kind of non-stop, but you don't miss things as readily. Um, I mean, I agree, like I don't have notifications for this email address on my phone, so I don't see things. So I catch up um, when I can. And I also agree that it's very problematic to store everything in email. And then you have to do a search and then you've got to find it and then you've got to open it and download it. Um.
I think it's unprofessional. I I think it's more than, I think it's really unprofessional.
Right. Well, it's cumbersome and it's problematic if you're trying to accomplish things. Yeah.
Can I ask one question? Does the um, does, do either of these tools have a schedule scheduler that's similar to this doodle thing? Where people can kind of, I I I think doodle in theory to me is good, but we've struggled to get people to actually fill the thing out. So if that way, it's not good because in theory it's great because you can put a bunch of time windows and have people vote. Can I do this? Can I do this? Can I do this? But then they don't do it. Um, do do we know if this, any of these systems have something like the doodle or whether it can work with that?
I, I mean, it's a scheduling software, so I think it's kind of in between where you look and you see when it is and you RSVP or you don't. But I can look. I'm sure it's in the answers.
Just curious, or whether it can work with doodle. I mean, I.
Or it probably could work with doodle. I wouldn't be surprised if it.
I think if it did, that would be, I just, I too find the current situation untenable because I mean, like I felt like a jerk today even asking Tom, like I couldn't find, I couldn't remember if I had RSVP to the Zoom today and I had to ask him to resend me the Zoom link, like that should just be somewhere where it's easily accessible.
All look at one place and find it.
Yeah.
And we're all looking at the same document. I and and timble is the right word. I I really am. I'm not particularly happy with the way we're kind of scheduling or organizing ourselves.
And I think if we do this, though, we have to like really mandate it, like, you know, I mean, I think at one point, and I'm not going to call anybody out on the board, but everybody's supposed to be on the WLS email system and I think at least one board member is not, and that's a problem, like we every, because we have to remember too, and this is, I think a platform like this is helpful also in that, you know, some of us have gone through the unpleasant process of having to turn over, you know, hundreds of pages of documents of all of our communications related to library business. Uh, and having a central place for this stuff is also very helpful in that vein, so that you're not like I was going through, because at that time we did not have mandated usage of the library email system. So I was going through my personal Gmail account, looking for stuff. And it was a experience that I never want to relive because it was very disturbing to me. Um, and so I like that this concept in that vein as well.
Yeah. I mean, I think the changing behavior is actually easier if everything is on there anyway, like.
That's where you'll know.
For a meeting, but everything will be on there for the board meeting. You have to, so I think part of it is um, that's where everything will be. So if you plan to be active at all, attend meetings, uh, look at the budget, vote on the budget, it's going to be in that one place. So um, you know, at some point.
And I mean, what's the worst that could happen? We implement it and, you know, six months a year goes by and we decide it's not great and the cost, you know, it's not like it's 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 money, but it's this not, this is not a hideous sum of money.
Right. Um, okay, I will send you guys kind of the follow-up documentation. And, you know, over the, we can ask each other questions and everything. Um, and I'd love to make a decision. Um, I I have to find, the one thing is I don't know if that discount was ending at the year end, in which case I'd have to get back to you and maybe we make a decision.
Um. I bet you could push them on that if they say it's year end.
Them for an extension, absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I'll send all the follow-up. That was, does anybody have any more questions? All right, that was one thing. Um, and then I don't know, I think these things are going to come up tonight. But um, I had questions about the courtyard. Are we talking about that tonight? Kind of update on the courtyard?
Yeah, we can, yeah.
Are we talking about uh, Rockwell painting? Update on the Rockwell painting? Yep. And we're talking about crock and kind of buildings and grounds. Are we talking about that? Update on that? Okay, those were the three outstanding things from all the emails I trailed. I was like, okay, we should really, um, I'm done. Thank you for your time. Sorry it took so long. Tom, you're on.
Deidra, yep. Um, I I'll make this fairly quick. Um, I will talk about our operational um, posture right now. And as you folks know, as of Monday, November thirtieth, our library uh, moved back to curbside delivery service only. We are not allowing um, members of the public into the building um, because of um, the COVID nineteen crisis and specifically uh, New Rochelle being in a yellow zone and um, the library being in the middle of one of those New Rochelle yellow zones. And um, just to give you a perspective, uh, today, uh, I received a report from one of our um, colleagues, one of my colleagues about the status of the thirty-eight libraries in Westchester. And there are twenty-six libraries, including our our library, which only provides curbside service. There are three libraries that allow access, but it has to be via an appointment um, process. And um, finally, there are eight libraries that are currently open, but open with restrictions. So our library is not unusual. Um, we um, are in this posture right now and we will be uh, functioning in this capacity for the indefinite future. Um, we certainly miss our patrons. It was great to reopen the library in September. But obviously now it's not terribly safe. And um, our curbside service, I have to tell you, is proving to be popular. Um, when we first started curbside service in June for just half a month, we had two hundred and forty um, uh, patron visits, picked up many, many um, titles. Then it jumped to seven fifty-three in July. Then we hit our high watermark in the summer with everybody reading family zone of nine hundred and seventy-eight. When we reopened in September, curbside started to um, dwindle in number. It went to five hundred and nineteen October. Um, we went to four hundred and forty-five. November was our smallest uh, curbside activity level with a hundred and thirty-one patrons um, taking advantage of the service. In December, and this is just for the first nine days, we have um, uh, worked with two hundred and twelve patrons for curbside. So we've almost doubled our November activity. And we expect to be busy through the rest of the month and as long as we need to be. So while patrons are disappointed, they don't have access to the library. It's been our experience that they're very understanding and that they know that they have access through curbside service, where our librarians and our clerks will pull the items that people want. And not just from our collection, but um, um, interlibrary loans are are um, in play now since since July. And uh, patrons have access to anything that's available in the other thirty-seven libraries. So that's, so that's good. And of course, while curbside services is in play, our staff is in the building. We're still staffing it at a reduced number per the state's um, order. But we are answering um, the phone, of course, or taking uh, answering uh, voicemails and helping patrons in that way. Uh, we are certainly answering emails too. Um, our staff is on top of social media. We have great people that are communicating via all the platforms about what's going on. Um, our programs, uh, in particular, the children's programs are very successful. And we're finding that of those children's programs, most people are finding the Facebook programs most popular. There's a some sense, though, that of families are and are tired of having their children always plugged in. I get it. Um, but um, nonetheless, that's how we're providing programs and 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 they and they have been successful. So, um, and of course, during the month of November, I didn't mention that we had two closures. The first closure was from November seventh uh, through November fourteenth. And that was an instance where a staff member was um, diagnosed with with COVID. And um, there, because of the um, widespread um, activity levels of that particular person, to be safe, we closed the library for that time period. We had all staff um, working during that time period um, have tests. The happy news is that there was no one that contracted um, COVID nineteen. So we were happily able to reopen at the, at the Monday and the following week. Um, and unfortunately, um, ten days later, once again, we had a staff member who um, contracted COVID nineteen. We once again closed a for a shorter period of time. And again, staff got tested. This time there wasn't as much exposure. And um, again, uh, happy um, um, answer was no one indeed had COVID. And so currently, um, we are, we are back in operation in curbside. I will tell you, there are a few staff members that are quarantining because of their exposure to um, to to people, but um, you know, we are still open. Those staff members um, have not uh, tested positive. And I'm told that they're all feeling healthy. So we're hoping to continue to dodge, to dodge that bullet as we go forward. Um, and just terms of activity levels, um, our state grants, you know, for the second floor, main library, phase one and phase two are all sort of jumbling together. And so we're in this strange scenario where we're receiving um, some equipment and quite a bit of furniture and some um, redos to the second floor. And we're not able to entirely put it in place because um, because we are, do not want to have tables and chairs out for the day when we reopen. Um, but we are excited about how the library is starting to to change. And um, at some point, the second floor, maybe within the next year, will be complete and will will be a great new space for um, our public and our staff. Um, at our Huguenot Children's Library, we had a grant for the replacement of the stairs between the first floor and the lower level. Um, we've had contractors in. We're hoping to receive bids and start to work in January as well. Um, had an interesting um, series of emails with the city's new volunteer coordinator. Her name is Judy, Julie Con- Convisor. And um, Julie, uh, myself, Daniel or Jerry, um, the Board of Education and some other of people from the city met with um, Development Commissioner Louise Aragon almost two months ago about CARES money that was going to be made available to the school district for Wi-Fi hotspots. And um, I just heard from her um, early this week, saying that there is some money left and wondered if there were things that we could um, do to provide um, a bridge in regards to the um, digital divide for many of our residents. And one thing we love to do is we would love to receive some of that money and purchase Wi-Fi hotspots so we could circulate to our patrons directly. And um, of course, the monies that the foundation raised um, for Wi-Fi hotspots went to the New Rochelle School District and their students and families. But we're hoping that we would be able to loan to our patrons because we certainly have encountered um, our residents don't have access and and um, to the internet. And um, and many of those folks, of course, don't have children in school, so it's not um, what the city's been able to share with residents, hasn't trickled down to those folks. And we're also looking at things like increasing the Wi-Fi capacity of our buildings so that the internet would be available in our adjacent outdoor spaces. And we're thinking about other things too as well.
Tom, Tom, can you just check in with the school district and make sure they're using our hotspots?
Sure. Um, actually, Dr. Marrero was part of our um, Rotary Zoom meeting last evening. And um, uh, I, you know, I meant to ask about just Wi-Fi hotspots in particular, but I didn't get the opportunity. But I will email, um, I will email tomorrow and and the, and the tech, and the tech people too.
Just to see, I mean, you know.
I was, I was told that they were being used. As a matter of fact, we have received a really lovely um, email of via um, an Isaac Young uh, uh, counselor who who apparently. who, who apparently had said this made a big difference. But I double-checked just to make sure. And just in terms of our personnel report, I'll sort of slide that in. It's fairly quick. We're in the process of filling the position that was previously held by Barbara Davis. We've retooled the name. Some of the duties have changed or there are fewer duties. And we have a nice crop of candidates. And just tonight, I sent the applications of the candidates to Daniel and to Chuck, who I believe are going to be part of the panel when we start the process and would love to talk to you about your thoughts about the candidates. And when you're available, do you want to meet via Zoom? Do you want to meet in person? All of that. And we are currently still working towards the upgrade of two positions. One, the outreach coordinator and the other, the, the, I'm sorry, the social, social media videographer. In the, in the, in the wake of the retirement of Barbara Davis and Roxanne Map, our graphics designer, we were looking to upgrade both of those positions. It's been very chaotic at the Civil Service Commission for a variety of reasons. And I just cannot make a connection. But I was told by one of the commissioners that early next week, I would be able to connect with the administrator and we would go forward. And that is it. And happy to answer any questions you might have.
Wow. Okay, great. Tom, I would say that's a vote of confidence in your leadership.
Thank you and the, and the staff and everybody.
Yep. So we're going to go to committee reports. And I know there are some. We're going to start with buildings and grounds. I don't know who's going to report for them. CROC Committee, Sarah's not there. I don't know who, Corey, I don't know who's reporting, but whoever is reporting for building and grounds, CROC Committee.
I mean, there's.
Um, so we have a meeting set up with the CROC Committee on December 22nd. I believe that we have most of the CROC Committee that's able to participate in that. So we should have something prepared for the January meeting as far as the recommendations, which will probably be very similar to what Doug's presentation was.
I have a question. At some point, are we going to be asked to spend money, like substantial money?
I would think so. The committee had discussed coming up with three different scenarios. So, you know, like a middle budget, high end and low end. So I don't know if the COVID situation is going to come into play, but there's definitely a lot.
So if I just want to suggest for capital projects like that, you usually go out to bond for them. So, I mean, go out for, vote for them, not to bond. So if we're going to need to do, and we might say we would never do that, but just to keep that in the back of your head, if we are going to do that, that's significant, what that means for your planning. You know, even if you're going to say we shouldn't do that, just know that that's something that's kind of looming out there for a huge project like this. Wouldn't you, Tom and Chuck, would you agree?
Yes.
I do. I agree. Yes.
Okay.
Sarah, do you have a high side, low side, mid side type of numbers?
I have to look back at the proposals for the high and low, but we can get that information to you.
Okay. Well, I guess seven figures, eight figures, do you remember?
I'd say like in the millions, on the high end.
Okay. I said.
So that's something we're going to have to, we're going to have to go out to a vote for that, guys.
It's definitely not, sorry.
Go ahead, Chuck.
I was gonna say, it's definitely not something we'd be able to cover with like operating budget.
So, so as you present those proposals, I'd like you to also include your, how we're going to pay for it. Can you do that?
Would, would that be more a function of the finance committee?
They can do it in consultation with the finance committee, absolutely. But my point is, when you come back to us with that big number, come back with, and this is how we're going to pay for it. So whether you want to work with the finance committee or whatever, just. Is that fair? I think so.
I think it's, if it's finance, and I would include special projects in that as well.
Okay, well, but you guys all, so however you want to do it. I'm leaving it, this is what I'm saying. It's buildings and grounds who's going to come back with, it's their thing. They're the lead. Consult with whoever you want to consult with. But Sarah, it's going to be on your committee to, to have those numbers and to have the recommendation. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, little baby. Um, okay. Community relations. Dan, I know you have a report.
Yes, just real quick. So, hold on, let me pull up my lovely email here. So Whitney was able to share something with us about Arts Westchester. And I'll send this over to Gina as well so she can add it to the minutes. But they're offering some great programs for teenagers. Arts Mobile Workshop, Teen Tuesday Workshop for 11 to 16-year-olds. And, you know, for those young people, teenagers that want to be engaged in more activities, especially while they're doing work from home, than when they happen to be a part of it. As many people already know, it was announced far and wide, but we'll, we'll put it on record here. Section eight application is opening up December 15th. In my capacity as a not-for-profit organization, I, Denise from Community Relations reached out. We, I do, I, we are aware that the library is closed, but she's going to help facilitate applications on an appointment basis. I'm going to collaborate with her. I know for a fact that my site at WestCom95, Lincoln and other organizations are going to be bombarded with individuals trying to get on the waiting list. So this is the beauty of New Rochelle, of organizations really working together to help our community. So I'm much appreciative about that on a community relation side to see that our community relations office is, is there to help families in need, especially during these times. So thank you, Tom, for approving that and giving the green light for her to really be in the trenches. Because we, we know, especially with the library being closed and computer access and internet, as we already know, for a lot of households with, with students, imagine individuals or adults, seniors or whomever really trying to get the, get on, on the waiting list. And again, the waiting list is open at 9:00 AM on the 15th and it closes at four o'clock on the 16th. So you literally like less, you know, 24 hours and some change of time. And that, and that, and that's it.
Dan, could I add just a little bit to that? And, you know, when Denise Link came to me, our outreach coordinator, I thought we absolutely had to find a way to help the community. And so while the library is technically closed, we will be taking appointments to help people. It will all happen in the community room. We will have laptops there. We will have a printer. We'll have Denise and maybe another staff member. And Dan, if, if you folks are inundated and we are finding that we are seeing fewer people, you know, we'd love to find a way to help, help your organization out and, and your clients by sending them to the library. It's such a short, short, a short window, a small window.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So when we, if, 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 and I think we are going to get bombarded, I think other organizations across the board, I mean, just to have different portals or sites or locations that people just can have access and get the assistance. I haven't seen the application, so I don't know what type of questions they're, they're asking. But at the end of the day, you know, anything that we can do to help families. So it's really great to have the library just really be a part of that to an extended, an extended resource, not only just come and get a book. You know, it's, it's, there's, there's that case management and, and, and human relation of social services that, that libraries are turning into. So it's beautiful to see that happening in, in New Rochelle for sure. And I think that's it. That's all that I have.
I have a question, actually, a very quick question, Daniel. Is it possible to see the application in advance? Like, can it be shared with people so that they can look at it in advance? Or is it only like released for that short window?
It's for that short window, unfortunately. I was trying to get my hands on like a paper copy or something just to see if there's things that family members are, you know, have to bring stuff or anything. But, but unfortunately, that's not the case. They're, they're literally opening it up on the 15th. Like, I have a feeling where I'm going to have a line of just people wanting to, to, to get in. And I hope the system doesn't crash. That's what happens when you have stuff like this, that everyone tries to log, log on. It's cloud-based and portal and, and things like that can, can crash. And, and if it does crash, I, I really hope they do extend the timeline. So fingers crossed.
And, and can I just say something, Daniel? It's a lottery and there's only 800 eligible people, so.
Right, right.
I understand that the questionnaire is preliminary, so I don't think it's very extensive, which is good in terms of being able to hopefully process people in a timely manner. You know, I understand, Daniel, that in 2016, White Plains opened their Section Eight housing and there was a huge rush. I mean, just a glut of folks waiting for the opportunity. Does anybody know what sort of questions were asked for, for the, for in 2016? And might they be similar? It's just, it's hard to know.
Maybe. Who knows? Who knows? If it's preliminary, it, it may be just about income information, household size. Do you receive any, any, you know, tan of services? Are you, you know, over the age of 65? It's probably going to be questions like that to kind of weed out the initial. And then, and then like Beth said, it's really, once you're in an application, your preliminary application is, it's pretty much lottery. But again, stuff like this, especially when it's, if it's a quick survey, these systems can crash. These systems can crash. So fingers crossed. But again, appreciate that the library and other organizations are just working together. And so we'll see how that goes on the 15th.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. So does finance have anything? You're muted.
Okay, here we go. Just really quick, we looked into changing banks. It just seemed to give us a credit card. Is that right, Tom? You're on mute. You're on mute, Tom.
Sorry, Corey. Yes, the answer is yes, we do have a card currently through HSP stage.
Okay. And so I did some research. I did reach out to the school board about their treasurer and how we go into the process of signing a bank. Her comment back to me was, it is whatever you guys want to do. I've tried to look into the bylaws and the relationship between the school district and the library. I think in the conversation Tom and Gina and I had, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. And it was, how does the library from an operating point of view have more authority when it comes to working with the banks? Issue being, this is from Jean, when Jean has to talk to the banker, she's not a signatory on the bank. So the bank isn't really, yeah. So the bank isn't really, you know, acknowledging her, you know, as someone that they need to adhere to. So I've just been trying to research on how that works and how we can get someone at the library, whether it's Tom, Jean, or something, some, someone that operates, signatory, become a signatory, have a signature card. So when they talk to the bank, they have more authority than the bank dealing with the school board. Now, the school board, they really, you know, it's not a vested interest for them when they talk to the bank and that relationship. So we're trying to right-size that. But I have to learn and understand and figure out how does the relationship work on the business side with the school board and the library? And can we have an operator within the library be a signatory? If anyone knows that answer, please tell me, but I'm researching.
Have fun with that.
Have the bylaws given you any insight so far, Corey? I know we just.
Yeah, we just, I got the ones you sent me. But that's only for the bylaws of the library. I think what's tricky, and I Googled it, is what's the relationship between the school and the library? And I don't know, has anyone ever seen that document or know anything about?
Didn't we talk about this, Tom, a while ago?
We did. Corey, the library is a school district library, which is a, an approved model in the state of New York in which the school district is legally liable to serve as the treasurer and provide those sorts of services to the library. And there are other libraries in, in Westchester and in the state of New York that are like that, like Mount Vernon now and Austining and Chappaqua and many libraries.
I think Chappaqua has their own treasurer. Someone else had their own treasurer.
What's that?
Some libraries have their own treasurer.
They can decide to have their own treasurer or they can go with these, with the school, the school district. Many years ago, we had the board really struggled with the issue of, should we bring our own treasurer on board or should we work with the school district? The scenario was that to bring our own treasurer was, was a very expensive proposition. And we felt that, or the board felt at the time that, that there was no good reason why the library and the school district couldn't cooperate. And there have been some challenging moments, but we are, we're doing generally fairly well with our school districts. We don't have typically very many problems. You know, Jean could fill you in and.
That's, that was one of her, you know, things that she runs into.
Well, it's not easy. It's not perfect.
Yeah, no, it, it does become a big thing because you're trying to get service at the library. You're trying to get the best service to operate your business, but the banker isn't acknowledging you. How could you perform your job?
So you're going to come back to us with some kind of recommendation as well, sir?
Yes, sir.
Man, man.
Yes, Bill. Yes. Yes.
Okay.
That's it. And that's where we are.
Okay. I don't have any personnel stuff. I don't have any personnel stuff. Policy, update on collection policy for local history women archives policy committee?
We have no, unless you want to talk about the archives policy, Tom?
I, I, I would really welcome the opportunity. The, the library staff consisting of our, our newest full-time employee, David Rose, the archivist, Larry Sheldon, who is the local history librarian, Barbara Davis, and basically those three, put together a collection policy for the local history room and our archive center. And it was really a very impressive and professional document, a document that really hadn't heretofore been in place. And this document consists of components that relate to the mission, our collection statement, selection criteria about what we are seeking to add to the collection, a deed of gift when someone makes a donation to us, and issues that relate to a reappraisal of the collection or in certain instances, deaccession of material from the collection and our, and our statements about how we intend to care for the collection. And it's, it was, I thought it was very well done. It was sent to the policy committee. Whitney has had some good comments and questions and I think we've answered them. And I'm hoping that the board, that the, that the policy committee would recommend that we accept this policy as, or at least consider accepting it at the January meeting.
I'm, yeah, I think that it sounded great to me. I had those two, those two questions. They were very thoroughly answered by two people, offering different perspectives, which I appreciated. I don't know how much the board, what does the board think about? Would you like to read it, review it before next month? Or are you, do you feel comfortable with just saying, go for it?
I'm comfortable with go, so, so we'd, I mean, you could.
I can forward it to you all tonight, if you'd like, but.
Yeah, it's really, I mean, look, I see no, I had a couple of questions and, and I feel like they were well answered. And I, I feel very comfortable. I think it's fair if everyone else wants to feel comfortable by reading it between now and January. But I think it's, you know, I trust.
Is there a time issue here?
No, not really.
So we can look at, we can just send it to us and we'll, we'll vote on it. Or do we have to vote?
What was our consensus, Tom?
I, I think our consensus was, we, we believe so. Our other policies have been voted on by the board. When it's a formal policy, I think it's a good, I think it's a, a, a good standard operating procedure to, to take a, to take a vote and pass a resolution approving that policy.
And then it goes in our minutes, and then it's something we can upload to our new platform and documents in the policies folder.
Very good, so I like to hear. We're already changing minds, I like it. Okay, special projects, who's reporting for special projects?
One mind at a time.
I think Corey has things to say, and I'll chime in for special.
I did have something with special projects, I did not write it down. Oh, I did, thank you, got it. All right. Chuck and I had a meeting with the New Rochelle Development Department of Development a couple of weeks ago, and it looks like we're in a good position of just being aware of what's happening within, you know, between our neighbors currently, arts are, and anything that they have planned. They know that they would like to work with us, I think I said some of this before, but we had a meeting after that. And I thought Chuck, you could chime in, and that went really well. And they understood that, you know, they'd like to keep us informed and just figure out, you know, they'll let us know what they're doing, vice versa, and just figure out how to work together. And that doesn't mean any real development. It's more of being aware of what's going on ahead of the curve, instead of finding out after the fact. There are things that they obviously were looking at doing, but, you know, because we've been able to engage in some dialogue, you know, they want to continue having conversations before they do anything. So you want to add, Chuck?
I agree, it was a positive meeting. It was a positive meeting, and we expressed a little bit of displeasure at some of our interactions in the past. And I think we, we vowed to have a more open dialogue going forward, and they seemed very amenable to that. So I think it was a good meeting.
That's good to hear. Okay, so then that's one. Then you got here, status of proposed library courtyard project.
Yeah, we can talk about that, too. You want me to talk about that? So we had a great meeting with our, you know, this meeting is similar to, to CROCC. I'm sorry, the committee is similar to, to CROCC. It's kind of the special projects committee members plus foundation people. So it's nice to be working closely on something together with the, you know, Chris Ellen and Lynn and, and others. And we're moving forward towards a point where, to your earlier question, Deirdre, about whether or not we're going to be coming and asking for money, and then, and, and with the kind of add-on to that of telling, telling you, making a recommendation about how we'll pay for it. We're getting to that point where I think we want to talk about the next steps with respect to bringing on Doug Emilio for this kind, am I, am I supposed to be talking about this? Is this okay to kind of mention where we are with this? Right, to talk about the Phase 1 portion of his proposal for the Memorial Highway Project. The Phase 1 project scope is basically looking into kind of conducting a, an, an initial analysis, and then a few options, I think, three concept designs. So he'll start the concept design phase, propose it. And then the, the objective is really, in order to move forward with the state funding that the foundation submitted the application for on our behalf, we need to know what the project will cost through bidding. So we need to get to a point where we have a, an, a budget that is based in, in real life, that's based in not, you know, estimates and conjecture, but actually understanding what it will cost. And what we're excited about is that, I think, in line with our, the passing of the baby, in line with our, with our building audit, one of the, the major improvements we feel we can make is to accessibility. So focusing on access from that side of the building, which is a lovely entrance. And it should be, you know, we should create equitable solutions for everybody to be able to access that lovely, that, you know, that lovely side of the, of the building. And we need to more deeply understand what that will cost us. But this seems like, I'm not going to call it easy money, but it's a very straightforward grant process compared to some other grant processes. It is a reimbursement-based grant, so we have to outlay the money, and then we will get reimbursed. And it doesn't, we won't get reimbursed until we spend all of the money. So it's not like a quarterly requisition process. This is my understanding, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong. But it's basically, you spend all the money, and then you get reimbursed once you have shown them to their satisfaction that the project is complete.
You're correct, Whitney.
Yep, so this is, in some grant cycles, obviously, you pay, and each month you provide requisitions and, and, you know, whatever reporting or compliance requirements they have. You, you, you conduct monthly or quarterly reportings, and you get reimbursed monthly or quarterly. And that would be better in some ways, but that, it's also a more rigid, it can be more rigid process, because it's, they're turning their money over more quickly. So there's less time for them to analyze what you're doing. But there are also fewer restrictions with how you spend the money, which means we can spend it on soft costs such as design work, and not just hard costs like the materials and the construction itself, which is great. So that's, that's positive. We feel this is a really worthy and important move to make, an improvement to make as one of the first, you know, kind of responses, I think, that we are formulating, I think, to the building audit. So and then the other component of it is the potential to improve the lighting. So that is a kind of an aesthetic element, but it's also safety. And, and, you know, it's, it's an important one, but that may be out of the realm of what we can afford for, for this, this part of the project. And I'll stop there and see if people have questions or want to add anything.
I guess I just have a quick question. Would this involve a financial outlay by the library? Or do you think it's, it could be covered by the grant, plus what the foundation might be willing to raise? Or, you know, put in for this?
So that's an important question, and I think one, we haven't, we haven't, we don't, we're not at the point where we're, we're going to say it costs $8,500 for Phase 1, and here's where that money is coming from. I think, I don't know what, if there are any foundation people listening to our meeting right now, it doesn't look like it. We have another meeting, Tom, I, we had talked about having another meeting in kind of mid-January, so that between now and then, we can, A, look at our finances and get help from Jean and Tom to determine if we want to spend that money ourselves, could we? And, and can we recommend that to the board? And what's the justification for it? Because really, we're spending money to determine how much money we'll end up spending. And in that process, we're also definitely going to be looking to the foundation to help us. This is a grant that was submitted by them and came from them, I think that they're prepared to. I just don't know that we've really hashed that out or discussed it. And, you know, we haven't determined percentages or numbers. And then it's really, you know, again, we're not prepared to, to say where that money can come from. We have to determine, I think that Tom has indicated previously that he feels we can definitely cover the $8,500 if we needed to. Is that right, Tom? Ourselves, yes.
Yes.
Yes. And then each phase from, from Doug Emilio is, I think, the next phase, I think all told, it was a $38,000 outlay, just for the, kind of, not just for, but for the design work, for the, it's the, it's the kind of concept, it's the design development, and then the construction documents, and then construction administration. Does construction administration include it as part of his proposal, too, Tom?
It is, Whitney, the entire, from the concept to the design development, to schematics, to bidding, to supervision of, of the work and closeout, is all part of the fee submitted by Doug Emilio in architectural studio.
And it was, is, is the right number around $38,000?
I think it's $38,000, yes, it's certainly $36,000, $38,000.
Okay. So the more we talk about it, the more, you know, he, he's, hasn't, you know, he's rightly wanting to be protective of his time, and he's trying to keep it lean for us, knowing that, you know, we're, you know, we're trying to make the most of what we, what we have. And, and, and we, you know, we are typically able to do that very well. So I don't think this will be an exception. And I, again, I think it's a really important focus for us, for this project. Does that answer your question, Chuck?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think the answer is it's not, it's kind of an unknown right now. That's, that's fine.
If you're talking about just Phase 1, I think we can do just Phase 1, but then right, we'll release more information, and then we have to decide. But once we get started, it's going to, you know, it's going to be less likely that we'll want to stop.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my, my ask would be just thinking about, you know, Sarah, like the work we're doing on buildings and grounds, which, you know, was, is going to point to a substantial expenditure to bring the facility as it exists today into a state of good repair, if we think it's going to be, and obviously, we'll talk order of magnitude numbers at a future meeting on that. And, you know, if we think we're going to end up in a place where it's, you know, sizable numbers for this project, the probably, I guess my point is the, the two things, maybe it's, need to be not considered in isolation from one another, like they need to be thought about somewhat, like, and I fully realize that there's, you know, grant money available, and I think we all want to make the most of grant money. But I just think at some point, it may, we may need to just think about them a little bit in conjunction, that's all.
I think we should absolutely be thinking about it in conjunction, especially when, I mean, I think what would be helpful from Doug is to help us understand what are the, and, and I think, I think to some extent, he's done this, right, Tom and Sarah, where he's helped us to kind of rank the levels, respective levels of importance of each fix that has to happen. But I know that this beg the larger question of the building itself being in need of a lot of repair. And then at what point do you say, this needs more than just kind of patchwork fixes? This needs something bigger. But to the, to the point about just, you know, this is money that thankfully, it doesn't expire anytime soon, but this money is here, we don't want to lose it. And it's a project that could be done kind of quickly, so the benefit would happen maybe more rapidly than some of the other lower ranking fixes that we would need to do.
I, I think one of the important issues to consider is unlike our other New York State construction grants, in which we received the money and then we use that money to do the work we agreed upon. It's reimbursable, so we need to have the funds to go forward, and then we'll get the reimbursement. So the money needs to be found from someplace, and then the, the reimbursement will arrive from the state of New York.
We assumed you'd cover that, Tom. That's, isn't that part of what you do?
Well, I think, that's, that's part of the other duties as assigned.
Just kidding.
Years, I mean, we also, that was the other cautionary tale, is that we, it could take a long time to get reimbursed. So it's not just like, oh, it will be reimbursed within this fiscal year. If we've spent it in this fiscal year, it's like easy money.
You gotta be prepared to bridge it.
Yeah, like, it's, it's like, they're not going to put that much pressure on us to prove this or that about how we spent the money on one hand. But then we're not going to be in the position to hold them to anything as far as paying, you know, reimbursing us. Kind of like, so it's like, it's an outlay for a period of time that we don't know.
I, I was told by Kathy Draper, who works for Amy Pollan, and is also very involved in Westchester Library functions, that the, the reimbursement process because of COVID, perhaps, and some other reasons, has slowed a bit. But she said it, it does, she said it's not, it's not an extraordinarily long period of time, but it can easily take anywhere from six to nine months, maybe even longer.
That's not that bad, okay? I thought it was like years and years, but if it's just, okay, so that's okay. So then, so then we can, we could count on it then, so that's okay. So the next step is kind of, you know, we need to, we need to fill out certain forms that have information on budgeting and pricing. And after that, you enter into, what is the document called? I called a funding agreement, that's what they called in the, in New York City, but I don't remember. It's just like a, it's a funding agreement, basically. And I believe any money that we are spending on this project from, at any point from which time the application was submitted can count as reimbursable. So if we were to write a check to Doug Emilio for $8,500 tomorrow, that money is eligible, as long as it's part of the project.
Okay. I am going to ask you to now talk about one last thing, the Rockwell painting. Do you guys need to talk about that, or are you guys, like, do you want to talk about that? I think you guys are in agreement on what you want to do.
Yeah, that's up to Tom if he wants to. I'm, I'm happy with this, this, with his recommendation.
Sure, I, I would very briefly, just like to recap. The previous year, we had entered into a contract with the Norman Rockwell Museum in Stockbridge, Massachusetts, in which they wanted to borrow our Land of Enchantment, because they had a, an, an exhibit that was supposed to take place in spring 2020. The focus was fantasy, Rockwell and fantasy. And of course, we have one of the preeminent works of art from Mr. Rockwell regarding that topic. We had worked through the process, the board had approved, and COVID struck, and they canceled the exhibit. They came back to us, probably in the fall of this year, and said, we are reconstituting the exhibit. We are proposing that this, that we borrow your, your painting once again. The dates would be June 12th of 2021 through October 31st of 2021. The one change was that they apparently decided to create a traveling exhibit, and there were two, at least two, and possibly a third museum that wanted the, our Rockwell to be part of that. One in Chattanooga, Tennessee, the other in Flint, Michigan. And it was my opinion and the opinion of, of the staff, and then we shared it with, with, with Whitney and, and the Special Projects Committee, that we certainly felt comfortable adhering to the agreement that we originally made. adhering to the agreement that we originally made, loan this great work of our, to the Norman Rockwell Museum, an organization we do have ties to for that period of time. But that, loaning it out to those other institutions, we felt wasn't really in the interest of our library and the community. There was no financial benefit, to put it bluntly, and it would be away from our library and our community for at least an additional eight months. When, and of course, when we had the painting in conservation, it was away for well over a year. And we just felt it wasn't, it wasn't necessary, and, and it was our recommendation not to loan it to those other museums, but to loan it to the Rockwell Museum, and of course, the, the Rockwell folks will cover all expenses relating to it, including insurance, and, and they'll return it to us as they found it and reinstall it as, as it's, you know, here in the library currently. So, I don't, if we need a, I don't know if we need a board resolution, but certainly I think so, I think just a sense of the board that we want to continue with this, with this arrangement that we previously made and had, and was canceled.
I think it sounds good, Tom, thank you for-
Thanks. Yeah, thanks for your thoughtfulness and deliberate. Marjorie's leaving. She said, she said, I need to sign off for another meeting. Do me, but I just want to say thank you for the caring work you do, and I wish you all the best, Marjorie. Same to you, Marjorie.
Thank you, Marjorie.
Thank you, Marjorie.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
So I think that's all we have on the agenda, and I was gonna open it up to public discussion, but the only public has just left the room. Does anybody have anything else they have any questions about before I adjourn the meet, meeting?
Nope.
Okay, I make a motion. Oh, oh, can somebody make a motion, or do I make the motion?
You can make the motion, and then we'll second it.
I make the motion to adjourn the, this meeting, the New York Public Library December meeting.
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Can we say Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year, and Happy Hanukkah?
Happy, all the things that you can be happy about in two thousand twenty.
Hope everybody has great holidays. Here's to a better two thousand twenty-one.
Please.
Yes, here's to an ending. Yes, yes, yes. I'll see you guys, thank you so much, the meeting's-
You're welcome.